Come and join me, we'll teach the world to fly. Will you come and join me? I'll fly into the sky. Join me, it's time to fly, let imagination go around. Join me, take my hand, run a little bit till you catch the wind. Run a little bit till you catch the wind.
Welcome everybody to this episode of the Elevate Your Leadership Podcast with me, your host, Bob Pizzini. If you've listened to my podcast in the past, you know that I like to interview guests who not only bring great value to me and my organization, but these are people who are going to bring great value to you and your organization. Today's guest is certainly no exception. I have Nanette Miller as my guest. Nanette is a 30-year Navy veteran. She was a commander in naval intelligence. She is currently running for the second, for the second district city council seat in Virginia Beach. She possesses a master's degree in American government from Regent University, a bachelor's degree in criminology. She grew up in this area, went to Cox High School. She's the vice chair of the Virginia Beach Republican Party. She supported the Yonkin campaign. She's a PTA with Kellum High School. And as a resident of Virginia Beach and somebody who's very active in the community, I thought it'd be great to have Nanette on the show to talk about her upbringing, to talk about leadership, and ultimately to talk about her bid for, for city council. Nanette Miller, welcome to the Elevate Your Leadership Podcast.
Well, thank you so much, Bob, for having me. This is my very first podcast. I appreciate it.
Awesome. Well, being your first podcast, you owe me a case of beer, you know that.
I was gonna ask about that. I figured in Navy tradition.
That's how we do it in the Navy. That's how we do it in the Navy. So, okay, well, let's talk about your upbringing a little bit. First of all, you know, you grew up around here from my understanding, but can you talk about your upbringing?
Sure. I, like everybody else, it was the 60s. It was a great time. I went to Thurgood Elementary School. It's still there today. And my kids actually went there for the first and second grade, I think it was.
Cool.
And then those days, we didn't have a middle school. You went right to high school. So in the eighth grade, I went to Cox High School and I spent a lot of time there predominantly working in the distributive education clubs of America and taking to distributive education, which meant those days, you got a job, which was great because I only had half a day of school and then I left to have a job at the Navy Exchange at Little Creek.
That's pretty cool. And then, so you did that through high school?
All through high school. And then I went away to college at Elon Uni-, which is now Elon University. And I spent a year there and I was homesick. So I came home and went to Tidewater Community College. And back in the day, I thought I wanted to be a social worker. So that was the, the career path that I was heading towards. And I did a couple of internships right down the street at a, it was, there was a group home facility down on 19th Street. Because Virginia Beach was, at that time, I think it still is, the number one place on the East Coast for teenagers to run away to. So I did that for about two years and realized that that was really not the path I wanted to be on. And I think like a lot of people in their early twenties, you're trying to figure out what you want to do and how you're going to do it. And low and behold, one of my roommates had a cousin who was doing the two weeks after boot camp recruit duty. And he sat down and talked to me about the Navy. And of course, I knew a bunch of guys who were in SEAL teams and UDT 21. And they always had fun and they always had someplace fun to go to. And I said, yes, but I want to do intelligence. I always wanted to do intelligence. I mean, I grew up in the 60s, so you grew up watching The Man From Uncle and The Green Hornet and Get Smart, all of those things. And it always intrigued me. So when they went through the litany of job descriptions, I said, that's the one. That's, I'll go in if I get to do that. And I did. And I thought I was going in for four years, but it was the best decision I ever made and I had a great time.
So I did the same thing when I enlisted, you know, thought I was going to enlist for four years and become a Navy diver and then go become a commercial diver. And, you know, that turned into a 26-year career. Also very cool. So you, you're the 60s, The Man From Uncle. I'm like one decade removed. So for me, it's Starsky and Hutch and Beretta, you know, so super cool though. Okay. So when you initially joined the Navy, did you enlist?
I did. I went in as an E3 because I had three years of college. And I figured this would be a great way to get the GI Bill and they would pay for my college and then I would just move forward. Of course, life never turns out quite as you plan. You can plan and plan and then you have to be ready to be flexible and go with what the real plan is. So I immediate, shortly thereafter, I came to the Navy, I met what was going to be, my, become my husband, which I'm still married to. It'll be 41 years in December. And as soon as-
That's awesome. Congratulations on that, by the way. Congratulations.
Very blessed. He's very good. Being married to a team guy, although, was quite the challenge. But a lot of good challenges. I don't regret any of that.
Yeah. So team guy, meaning your husband was a Navy SEAL.
Yes. Yeah. So great group of people, probably. And I was very fortunate that right out of intel school, I went to Spec War Group Two. And then from there, Matt and I got married and he was already in Scotland. So I was able to go to Scotland with him. You couldn't go to Scotland those days unless you were a married female. And so I was the only female on the base and the only female at the command, which, you know, presented some different challenges and whatnot. But I always found that as long as you work hard and you're willing to do what it takes to get the job done, nobody looked at me as I was just a girl or anything else. Any, literally, anything I wanted to do, I got to do.
Yeah, that's great. And for the listeners at home, if you hear jets roaring around in the background, we're coming to you from Virginia Beach, Virginia, and we call those jets the sound of freedom. So don't be distracted by that. You probably can't hear it, but just in case, because they're, they're ripping pretty hard out there today. Okay. So you went to Scotland and at some point you transitioned from enlisted to officer. How did that happen?
Well, I had, I ended up having two children and while my children were little, I was in the reserves. And I went to school full-time and I got, got my bachelor's degree and applied for an intelligence commission. And I was fortunate to get picked up for that. And so I found myself in it and then got this, got to serve again in the capacity on active duty for, while my kids were little, I was very fortunate. I got to serve as a reservist, but spent a lot of time on active duty. So I learned a lot. And I was able to keep my career moving forward. So once they were solid in school, I was able to go back on active duty and had a, had a lot of opportunities that other people just didn't have. I was truly, truly blessed with the career opportunities that they afforded me and learned tremendous things.
Yeah, I have to say the exact same for my career, you know, explosive ordinance disposal, EOD, little different than intelligence, but we, we rely on intelligence, obviously. And, and every now and then you guys would get it, right? So-
It's still a gas.
Yeah, 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 yeah. No, that's fun. So that's kind of the banter that we do within the services and it's super fun. But, but, you know, our mission readiness and our mission success really, really hinges and relies on intelligence. So, so no doubt then and now, we appreciate everything you did. So when did you retire from the Navy?
I officially retired March 1st, 2013. So during, let's see, during, let's see, 20, when, when 9/11 happened, that day, I was literally driving to the Pentagon for a meeting. So of course, I immediately did not go. Called all my, my, my office was in Danak. I told everybody to get out of work. And then we would regroup the next day and talk about what, what we were going to do. So it took a couple of days for us to regroup. And that was really, I think, a very changing and dynamic moment for me because immediately I stood up and said, I need, I need to be deployed downrange. What are the opportunities? What can we look for? I had been fortunate, early in my career, I was credentialed to NCIS agent. We knew they needed help. And I tried to volunteer to go do some work with them. And then low and behold, there was an opportunity to deploy with Carrier Air Wing Eight onboard the USS John F. Kennedy. And I went there. I was also trained as a targeteer. So I got to go there and that was probably the most unique thing I'd ever done. It was an amazing challenge. I learned a lot about the Navy because I was on a ship and that was really my first opportunity to be on a ship. The people that I worked with, I was used to being around Spec War guys. I was not used to being around aviators and they are totally different.
Boy, are they ever.
They are so different.
To all my aviator friends out there, you guys are different.
They really are. But it was a great opportunity. And as soon as I got back, then there was, I got a call and said, we needed to go down to Tampa and go to US Central Command. And when I got there, this was October of '22, they said, well, you're going to be getting ready to go to Iraq. Oh, I'm sorry. What happened to Afghanistan? So they explained what was going to happen next. And then they looked at me and they said, well, you're going to go over here and work with the civil affairs guys. That's an army job. I'm Navy and I don't know anything about civil affairs. But I was very fortunate to be assigned to an amazing group of people. And two colonels took me under their wing and taught me civil affairs and the type of intelligence they would need. And that was probably the most dynamic, rewarding, hardest thing I ever did in my life was working with those guys. And it was phenomenal.
So civil affairs, CA, is kind of what we call it. Did you learn anything in that role during that time that you think would apply to your role as you seek a position in city council?
Oh, absolutely. Because the whole role of civil affairs, of course, was the humanitarian effort. At the time, Iraq was getting money from, for their oil. They called it the Food for Oil Program from the UN. And because of that, they needed to know who was getting fed and how they were getting fed and where were the foods stored at. So my job was to try to figure that out. The interesting thing is, no one in the intelligence community knew that, the national intelligence community. So I had to go around and talk with lots of different people till I found the person who had that. So my opportunity was to work with the Red Crescent Society, which is the counterpart to the Red Cross. I talked with those guys, USAID representatives from the UN. So it was a fascinating job to try to figure that out and make sure that we were going to protect the citizens there from the impact of war and in particular, making sure that they had the, the food and resources that they needed to have.
So that kind of gave you the ground truth, as we call it. You were, you know, you really understood what it was like to be a citizen in Iraq at that time, where facing dangers, facing economic challenges, all of the, all the hardships of the time. So you retired in 2013. And then what did you do from 2013 until present day?
Well, it was the very first time that I could go to college full-time and not have to work. So I did. That's when I went and got my master's degree at Regent, which I looked at several different programs because literally with the GI Bill and at the time, so many universities were looking for military. I could, I looked at Harvard, I looked at UVA, I looked at ODU, and I looked at Regent. And really, I wanted to have a faith-based master's education and Regent was the place for that. And I thought it, they have a phenomenal program over there. The, the professors are outstanding. And everything was focused on, here's where our founding fathers were really at when it came to developing American government.
That's great. You know, I've interacted with some of the folks over at Regent, Dr. Gomez, I don't know if you encountered her during your studies or not, but, but through the Chamber of Commerce and through some leadership initiatives. And I've had very positive interactions. And we also tried to get a hockey team stood up over there. You know, I coached college and I coached high school hockey. And, and Regent was, was, and hopefully still is trying to get a hockey team stood up. So I've had a positive experience with, with the folks over there as well. So let's talk about city council and let's talk about Virginia Beach. So clearly you're a lifelong resident. Clearly you kind of grew up and went to the schools in the district that you're running for. But why is it that you decided, and I think your field, there's five candidates, if I'm not mistaken?
Yes, I think we should just go ahead and have a baseball team at that point.
Yeah. But why is it that you decided to run for the, the second district for city council?
Well, it was, it's been kind of an interesting journey. I have always been interested in how the city government is run. When I was in high school, I took psychology class. And sad to say, but it was one of the first times they had ever offered psychology and sociology in the high schools. So I took both of those and it gave me an opportunity to look around at what was going on in my city. Because that's the ground truth of your society is your local cities. And I noticed that there was, at that time, in the mid 70s, they were starting to do a lot of expanding and building and Virginia Beach was still a relatively new city. It was 15, under 15 years old. And they had just Shore Drive, four lanes, not two lanes. They had just put up the second bridge. And the city was growing exponentially. It, when I graduated from high school, there was 225,000 citizens in the city. And we now have almost 470,000. And I think in a very short period of time, we're going to be at the 500,000 mark. So I've always paid attention to what was going around. I enlisted in the Navy in 1980 and the current incumbent was elected in 1978. So she's been there a minute and she was born and raised in the south end of town. I, it's the same farm her family has owned for a very long time. She's been there a long time and she's very, very smart. But she has been there for an extremely long time, over four decades.
Yeah. And just, and just to clarify, you're talking about Barbara Henley, who is the incumbent, what was called the, what was traditionally called the Princess Anne District, but through this, this, not really redistricting, kind of redistricting, but this, this transition to a ward, W-A-R-D, to a ward system versus an at-large system. But yes, but Barbara Henley has been the incumbent since what year?
1978.
Wow, 1978. So that's a long time.
It's a long time. Yeah. I mean, I went and did two other careers.
Yeah.
She's a nice lady and she's done a lot of wonderful things, but it's, you know, it's different. It's time for a change. And I, because I'm involved in politics, I've helped so many other people get elected and help them with their campaigns. I never thought about running. I always thought my calling was more of helping everybody else and kind of making connections with people. I've always loved to do that. And that's, especially being an intel officer and the experiences I had, that was mostly what I did. I used to, when I would mentor some of my younger intel officers, that the key to being a good intel officer, it isn't what you know. There's too much to know. It's to know who, know the people who know and get, and reach out to those experts. So that's always been, I think, my forte. But when they did the redistricting, the person that I was going to support called and said, I'm no longer in the district. So he wasn't going to run.
Right, right.
Started looking around and you know how that little voice in your head starts rambling on and all of a sudden, there's that little thing on your shoulder that says, you, you really need to think about this. So my husband and I started talking about it and he said, well, if ever there was a time, this is your time.
Okay, that's excellent. And in terms of impact, so, you know, there's so many issues regarding the district, the green line, for example, where, you know, we maintain an agricultural, agricultural zone, if you will, on the south end of Virginia Beach. But, but, you know, what issues or what is it you hope to accomplish by winning the seat?
Well, there's, the number one thing I would like to accomplish is more a sense of team on the city council. It's funny, I went into a forum and I think it was like my second forum. So, you know, you're still trying to, my husband calls it being forged as a candidate, which is true, kind of like being forged as that warrior. So I went into a meeting and it's a room full of business leaders. And the first thing they asked me was, the city council doesn't seem to be a cohesive organization. What would you do to change that? And I thought about it and I said, well, in the Navy, we would do a team building event. And they said, okay, well, what kind of team building event would you do? And I, and I did start to giggle and I said, well, skydiving is usually a really good one to build.
I was going to say, take, take them to IFLY Virginia Beach.
And of course, when I said, skydiving, everybody was like, oh. And I said, no, no, I mean like down to Bob's at IFLY. And they were like, oh, okay, we could do that. But they do need to do something that builds trust and cohesion. And it's going to be even more of a challenge with the ward because now everybody is literally accountable to their district. And if you aren't accountable to your district, they will vote you out. But you also have this large, massive city that has to be run and has to be run well. So I, I think my number one skill set is doing just that, bringing in a cohesive group. It's what we did in the Navy. I did it all the time, everywhere I went. It was a matter of, you're thrown into a situation and you have to step up. And I am ready to step up. And I think at this point, looking at the field of candidates, I am the only one that's willing to do that. I am the only veteran in my district and there's only one other veteran on the council that spent more than four years. Of course, our mayor, Bobby, spent four years in the Marine Corps.
Yeah, yeah.
Rocky Holcomb spent four years in the Marine Corps. And John Moss is the only other person who has served. And I think he's served 20-plus years. But this is a city that the military brings in $250 billion a year. And we don't have people who can speak military. That's crazy.
Yeah. You know, I think your point, a couple of things there. You said that you were interviewed recently. Was that the Chamber of Commerce interview?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Which I'm very active with the chamber. And I was out of town, unfortunately, on those days, or I would have participated in those, which I have in years past. But I think you're right. You know, building a team that goes forward together is a team that's going, going to get things accomplished. You know, in leadership, we say, if you want to go far, go alone. I'm sorry, if you want to go fast, go alone. If you want to go far, go with a group, kind of like the Canadian geese making their migration, right?
Yeah.
So, okay, so, so your kind of primary objective then is to bring or build unity amongst council members. Totally agree with that.
Well, we're, we are going to have to do that because of the very unique things that are getting ready to happen in the city. And that was what really sparked my interest. At one point in my career, I, I actually was the deputy program manager for the second largest technology program. Don't get excited. I don't know crap about computers. But I had a fabulous team that worked for me and my job was to make that team run 28 different sites across the nation over three classified networks. So it was a very dynamic team that we had and we were extremely successful. And with Virginia Beach right now, we've got the wind farm projects that are being heavily talked about. There is pressure for solar farms, which I'm talking to some state delegates right now on what's being done with Dominion Energy on that. And where they said, we have the underwater sea cables that are coming in. And then you look at the growth of the city. We have supposedly a large, and nobody wants to say the name, warehouse that'll be built up on Danak Road. And it's going to be a massive hub for the mid-Atlantic. And so that brings a lot of challenges, one of which the neighbors are concerned because they're talking 450 18-wheelers a day coming through that. So you have to have people who are energetic, who understand the dynamics of project management, who are willing to talk to people, which that doesn't always happen, especially in my district. And you have to be able to listen. And the number one issue that I see, and I, I, for the last eight months, I have attended every city council meeting but one. And the number one issue I have watched is people do not listen. They walk in, they do not check their ego. They walk in with their, their cape of ego on, on how they're going to make, make their statement on how, how things should be done.
Yeah, I've seen that too. It's, there's no room for compromise. A lot of times, they don't come in for a discussion. They come in to, like you said, make their, make their case known and, and, you know, and stand their ground. And I, I think that any council member, the mayor, any elected official, they have to consider the, the, you know, what's good for all, right? The needs of many outweigh the needs of one. And that has to be on every, or that should be on every council member's mind going into it. Okay. So are there any other issues in particular that you think are important to discuss regarding, you know, what's, what's front and center with, with Virginia Beach right now?
Well, of course, always front and center is taxes and budget. And of course, everybody felt the pain this, the, in the spring when we got our tax bill. And you looked at the amount of your personal property tax. Now, the city council voted to give a 25% discount, but the value of, of cars went up 40% of used cars. So everybody had an increase on that and that was tough. And I think that they have to be very, very cautious, starting right now at looking at what are, what's going to happen in the spring and where are we going to be? And how do we adjust that tax rate base? That's the number one issue. Of course, this is a city that we are considered for the size of the city, where I think we're the number one safest city in the country. We do that because we have a fabulous police force. We have an amazing sheriff who runs a, an outstanding jail. Because if you look at the Virginia Beach jail, one-third at any given time are mentally ill patients. And Sheriff Staley's done a great job at reaching out to national resources, state resources, getting both funding as well as equipment and that sort of thing in there. But we have to keep that up. And we, and the city council needs to be aware of that. I don't know anybody else who's taken the time to go over to the jail. I have. My husband was a deputy sheriff, so I have that in. Ken Staley and I've been friends for a long time. In fact, when I was in Enson, Ken taught me how to shoot. And told me I had to keep my eyes open. So I, I think those are very dynamic things. I actually applied to do a ride-along. So I got a call yesterday that I was approved to do a ride-along.
That's great.
I'm going to do that in mid-October on a Friday night.
Good.
And see really where are the hotspots. I'm, I live in a bubble. I'm very safe in my neighborhood. I am surrounded by neighbors who are federal agents, SWAT officers, K-9 officers, SEALs, the whole bit. So my little bubble's really safe, but not everybody's safe. And if you're going to represent the people, you have to know where they are. And you have to understand that.
Yeah. And, and you know, I, I agree. We have a great police force. We have a wonderful new police chief. His predecessor also did a great job. But I do see, you know, I haven't looked at official numbers in the city of Virginia Beach, but just like the rest of the country, I believe crime is on the uptick in Virginia Beach, just as it is everywhere else. And I'm, I'm hearing from, you know, reliable sources that cartel activity has infiltrated our area. Of course, gang activity has been a thing for a while. So there's definitely some work to do there. Again, I applaud the efforts thus far, but there's certainly some work to do there to keep us safe. We are safe, no doubt about it, but it's becoming more and more difficult for, I think, for our leaders to keep us safe. So there's a, there's a challenge there. Okay. So, so you've got some agenda items. You know what you want to do going into it. Is there anything else you want to tell to the voters? You would like to say to the voters of the second district?
Oh gosh, that's a good question. I haven't, haven't had that one asked. It's funny, we've done all these forums and it's very difficult to break out because they all want to, how do you, how do you feel about taxes? Well, I think taxes are bad. How do you feel about this? Oh, I think that's bad. Everybody agrees on the ARP. Okay. So my husband and I have been talking about this the last three days. How do you really strategize? I think the thing that, that I am trying to get out to the community is that I am different. And I'm different because I bring an amazing amount of experience doing some really amazing things. Not because I am an amazing person. This is not about me. I have never wanted to run for office. There was this little teeny voice that was sitting on my shoulder yelling at me. And literally during Lent, I opened up my devotional one morning and I opened it up and he goes, I've chose you. And I was like, so closed that back up and kind of walked away. And, and that's when I reached out to some of my friends who were elected officials and talked with them and, and really got the thumbs up that, you know, I bring something different. I bring a knowledge and understanding, a broad knowledge and understanding, not just of the city. Cause I, my first half of my life, I lived offshore drive, which is extremely different than the second half of my life, which is the southern end of the district, which is predominantly the agricultural region. So I understand that there's three, they consider there's three pillars of economy in Virginia Beach. So the agricultural, the military, and the resort. All three of those are in the district. I've participated in all three of those adventures. Not that I'm a farmer. I have a hard time keeping a plant alive, truly. But I think that I, I am the type of person that I acknowledge my shortcomings and I know when to ask and I know when to step up.
You know, I think it was Plato who said, "Those who do not seek public office are the most qualified to hold it." Something along those lines. So, you know, you resisted, you resisted, you resisted and you just decided, you know, it's, it's time for, it's time for somebody to bring unity and really have an impact. So that's, that's pretty huge. And let's see, there was one other item there. So, okay, you have, how many days until the election?
I think we're down to 40.
Okay, 40 days until, so never, November 4th, November 6th?
November 8.
November 8. Okay, November 8. And this time, as you indicated earlier, you don't vote for the whole slate. You go in there and you vote for your ward representative. And we have- You go in there and you vote for your ward representative. And we have five people, six people running?
We have five people in my district, the incumbent, myself. There were three others, Elaine Fetke. She lives at Sandbridge. She's lived there in Sandbridge for 27 years.
Okay. They need good representation. That's
They do, they do need good representation. And I have always said, the Sandbridge Civic League has done an amazing job. Given the fact that they're really a resort area with all the short-term rentals and
That's right.
And all of that. They have still managed to maintain a sense of community, which is extremely important because especially when you have the, the short-term rentals and, and it's a new dynamic. It's a relatively new dynamic. It is easy for the city to be taken over. I have friends that were in Folly Beach, South Carolina. His family home, he had had, he inherited. The house was more than 100 years old down at Folly. And they just sold it and moved to Columbia because there was nothing but short-term rentals. There was no sense of community. It wasn't being managed well. It's difficult to manage and make sure that the homes are being well taken care of and in good working order, because most of them are being bought up by corporations. So Sandbridge, my hat is off to Sandbridge. They do an absolutely amazing job.
They do. And there's kind of the cycle, you know, the short-term rentals out there are mainly the seat, the tourist season, you know, June, July and August. And then, and then locals occupy their, their places the rest of the year. That seems to work out fairly well, you know, and I think they, they do a good job out there. Okay, also, you have endorsements. And I'll tell you what, why don't you just talk about your endorsements rather than me speculate? I'm pretty sure I know who they are, but go ahead and tell us about your endorsements.
Well, I haven't put a lot of focus on endorsements because I just don't. For some people, it's really relevant. I felt like I, I went into a, one meeting with someone and the, and this was early in my campaign and their very first question was, well, who's endorsing you? Uh, I don't know. Somebody wrote me a check. Does that count?
Yeah, right.
And I'm still not quite sure. Does that count? But the, the one I am most proudest of, I didn't, was from Winsome Sears, our lieutenant governor. And I think that she is just a fabulous example of what servant leadership is, to come in and be honest. She's down to earth. She can talk to anyone.
Former Marine?
Former Marine. Well, we, I think it was in the summer. It's the picture that I do have posted. I have a brooch that is the Navy brooch. There's a lady named Ann Hand. I hate to give her ads, but anyway. If you look at Nancy Pelosi, Nancy brooch, she always wears a brooch.
Okay.
All her brooches are from Ann Hand. But Ann Hand makes the service brooches. And so I, this summer, beginning of the summer, I walked into an event with Winsome and I had on my Navy brooch. And we went up to get a picture and she had on her Marine brooch. And we both looked at each other and went, Ann Hand! Yes. So you know, that little bit of that little sisterhood going on. So
That's fun.
I'm very, very proud and I am humbled that, that she sought me out and thought that I deserved to have her support. So I'm very appreciative of that.
That's incredible. That's awesome. And then of course, and I'll go ahead and mention the others. I know Jen Kiggins, who's a, a current state senator and running for the second congressional district. I know she supports your campaign. And did I, is there anybody else? Am I missing anybody else?
Well, Glenn Davis is supporting my campaign. Of course, I've helped Glenn a lot and I love Glenn.
Sure.
He's my delegate. And so in fact, I was talking with him last night at an event. And, and I really don't want to promote endorsements all that much. The fact that they support me, I think the number one thing is if, if people just, if you don't live in my district, you can't vote for me. You're not going to write me a check. You're not going to put a sign in my yard. That's all wonderful, but please say prayers because this is what it's all about. It's about really doing the Lord's work and being at the right place at the right time.
Yeah, prayers count. There's no doubt about that. Okay, Nanette Miller, great discussion. Is there anything that I haven't asked you? Or anything you feel that you'd like to share at this point?
Well, I always like to toad on, I started my day off right this morning. I went by and grabbed my two little granddaughters and took them to preschool because they go to preschool right down the street. I, I think my, I don't know how you phrase it, my proudest, most rewarding role in life is not just to be married to Matt. He's a wonderful person. I do love him. He's a spoiled, spoiled man, but I do spoil him terribly. But it really is my four granddaughters. And that's the reason that I do everything. When my oldest granddaughter was born and I was at the hospital and I got to hold her that first time, I looked down and went, the children don't matter at all. Them two girls knew.
That's funny.
That is your legacy. Your grandchildren are your legacy.
Yeah.
And, and that's who I, that's why and who I do everything for.
Yeah, that is super cool. Okay, Nanette, thank you so much for appearing on the Elevate Your Leadership podcast. We're gonna look at that camera right there and say goodbye to everybody. And I hope you enjoyed today's edition. Stay tuned as I interview more guests, not only for the Virginia Beach City Council race, but also on the national stage. Jen Kiggins has appeared on the Elevate Your Leadership podcast. Hung Kao, who's running in the 10th district for Virginia, has also appeared. So keep checking in and see what great guests we bring. Ultimately, this podcast is about leadership and developing leaders and, and applying the principles of leadership for, for the purpose of enhancing other people's lives. All right. Thanks, everybody. See you later.